I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present in person in the administration building and members are also attending through video and audio conference in accordance with the governor's suspension of open meeting requirements to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. One, that members of the public may attend this meeting in person or watch it live on Waco ISD TV, Channel 17, on Grande Communications and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Members of the public attending in person may sign up to offer public comments on an agenda item as is our normal practice. Members of the public who are not attending in person have been given instructions or were given instructions to submit those comments in writing to Joshua Wucho via email by 10 o'clock last night. Members of the board who are not physically present in the boardroom are participating via a video conferencing application which allows for two-way communication between those in person and those participating remotely. All items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. If you have any questions about the suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787 or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. The next item is on our agenda, our public comments, and I understand we do have a member of the public who wishes to address the board tonight who's there in person. Ms. McComas, Paula McComas, my apologies if I have mispronounced your name. Before we recognize her, did we receive any comments by email last night?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then at this time, Ms. McComas, if you'll approach the podium. Mr. Dupuy, do you mind being the timekeeper? And then would someone adjust Ms. McComas's camera so that we can all see her? Yay, good, there, okay. Welcome, Ms. McComas. If you are ready, or when you're ready, you can begin. Three minutes according to our board policies, the time allotted for public comments.
Good evening, my name is Paula McComas. Thank you for letting me speak with you today. I am here to make you aware of the situation that's going on at University High School regarding what I would consider the theft of an athletic equipment by Waco ISD personnel. Let me give you the story of the time of the event. I have two grandsons that play baseball at University High School. One is a senior this year and the other one is a junior. Student athletes are assigned a locker to the store to store their sports equipment. Each student buys their own lock and to secure their personal and their equipment. For insurance, my senior grandson plays sports, which right now, he doesn't have his bag, two bats, two gloves, his cleats, his ball pants and shorts, jerseys and hats, which were all brought in his own. We parents and grandparents had bought these for him. These were supplied by us, not by the Waco ISD or by the school, and these items were at least worth over $900 of the equipment bought for him. By the coronavirus hits, kids leave for spring break. School shuts down till August when school starts back again. But during, before school started, they went back and participated with the baseball, playing games representing the University High School. School shuts down because the COVID got a little worse, so they told the students they could not participate anymore due to the COVID. They come back to school when they found out that all the athletic lockers were empty, they were cut off, and not just the baseball team, but the football, soccer, basketball, volleyball and all the athletic sports. The coaches were surprised and upset about the situation. They had no idea what had happened or why. I called the principal of the University High School. They kept transferring my calls to assistant principal, to athletic department and back to Coach Massey. So I called Waco ISD main office and left the message, and a nice lady, Ms. Wanda Williams, returned my call. When I told her about the situation, she referred me to call Mr. Ed Love. Mr. Ed Love told me that several parents had already contacted him about the missing equipment, so he told me he would look into it and get back with me. The following week, Mr. Love calls me and said that the Waco ISD main office said that they were not going to do anything about it. He referred me then to speak to Mr. Kyle DeBeere. I called him and left the message. Meanwhile, while I was waiting for him to return my call, I called back the Waco University High School to speak to the principal, which I was connected with Mr. Rick Edison. I told him who I was and the situation that's been happening at the athletic department. He then told me that he couldn't make any comments because he was under investigation. I called Mr. DeBeere back, and this was the explanation that he told me. Some four years back, a coach that's no longer employed by the Waco ISD told the custodial staff to clean up the lockers at the end of every school year. Mr. Beere made it sound like this was some kind of a school policy or standard practice, which is not true.
I can't hear Kerry's mic.
I didn't hear you.
Hold it down, there we go. Okay, I'll let you run a little bit over, and I'm interested in hearing the rest of the story, but to be fair to everybody, I do need to kind of limit your time here. Dr. Kincanon, is there another time we could, I guess collectively help address this problem?
Yeah, we can meet with you.
And hear the rest of the story?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so y'all gonna let me know when we can meet again about the situation?
Yes ma'am, we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I could not hear the timer. I couldn't hear the timer going off, so, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is special recognitions, and I think, is that Ms. Robertson tonight? Yes, hi Laura.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kincanon and members of the Board of Trustees. This evening, we are excited to virtually recognize the hosts of students and staff from across Waco ISD, starting with a group of special students who participated in a special project over the summer. Boss Club Foundation exists to inspire confidence and ignite creativity in students through practical entrepreneurial education. Their summer entrepreneurship programs enable students ages seven to 18 to start real businesses over the course of three weeks. Each student is given a business kit and curriculum to start their own business, learning the basics of product creation, marketing, customer service and financial literacy. Students have the opportunity to select from homemade dog treats, luxury bath bombs, gourmet cake pops, homemade fudge, luxury soap, or a self-guided video course to come up with an idea all their own. The 2020 summer programs held in Dallas and Waco included just under 900 total students participating, including 35 from across Waco ISD. I'm gonna read some list of names to you, but I do want to make a special note that I'll come back to about one of the students. So, starting with some of the students, we have Jada Easley from Hillcrest, and you can see up on the screen what their actual category was, that their business was. Angela Galvin from Waco High, Christopher Gladden from Lake Air, Eric Gonzalez Jr. from Cesar Chavez, Sinisia Green from Atlas, Gabriel Haynes from Hillcrest, Natalie Hernandez, Bell's Hill, Miguel Hernandez, Atlas Academy, Keishon Holly, Waco High, Brooklyn Hopkins, Dean Highland, Jaquan Johnson, JH Heinz, Kaylee Casal, Atlas Academy, Devontre Kirkland, Cesar Chavez, Mary Ari, Mariquin, Atlas Academy, Ashley Morones, Waco High, Samantha Nava, Waco High, Hazel Orchard at Alta Vista, Cassidy Orchard, Alta Vista, Josiah Pollan, Parkdale, Alaya Pollan, Waco High, and Isaiah Pollan from Atlas Academy. So we had a couple of siblings, it looks like, back to back there. Yadira Salinas from Atlas Academy, Christian Salinas, University High, Aaron Sanchez from Hillcrest, Giselle Sanchez, Lake Air, Angel Sanchez, Waco High, Monserrat Serrano, Waco High, Gianni Sosa, Waco High, Anaya Soto, Indian Spring, Abigail Torres, Tennyson, Jureli Torres, Indian Spring, Epiphany Velasco, Waco High, and Matt Zapata from Atlas. And the special note is actually about that last student, Max. So, David Grubbs, who is the Director of the Boss Club Foundation, noted that Max had done a tremendous job, and he is considered one of their program's stars. His business is actually still up and running, if you want to give him a look, and you can find him on Instagram @mr.sugarbakery. And if you follow him on Instagram, you'll see that right now he's actually partnered with Curbside Coffee, right down the street from the administration building, where you can pick up and order his cake pops that he is still managing. So I suggest you give him a follow on Instagram if that is your thing. So congratulations to all of these students for taking a little bit of an entrepreneurial journey this summer while they were off of school. Next up, we're gonna transition to some of our secondary students. By taking the preliminary SAT, or National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, in the fall of their junior year, high school students become eligible for a variety of national level recognitions, including the National Merit Scholarship Program and the College Board's National Recognition Programs. The College Board National Recognition Programs create pathways to college for students from underrepresented communities by awarding them academic honors and connecting them with universities across the country. Students who take the PSAT, NMSQT, and earn a qualifying score meet other academic qualifiers and are African-American, Hispanic-American or Latinx, indigenous, or attend school in a rural area of small town may be invited to apply for academic recognition. University High senior Corinne Rodriguez, who has notified last month that he had been granted recognition in a national Hispanic recognition program based on his performance on the PSAT, NMSQT. The National Merit Scholarship Program for Recognition and Scholarship began in 1955 as a way to honor individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. Waco High senior John Martinez, whose score on the PSAT, NMSQT, was in the top 3% to 4% in the entire country. He recently received a letter of commendation in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. Although commended students do not continue in the competition for national merit scholarships, some of these students do become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. And we have a couple of pictures of these students. First up, there's Corinne Rodriguez from UHS, again earning national Hispanic recognition for his scores. And then we have John Martinez from Waco High School who earned commended status as a national merit scholar. So congratulations to those two students for representing both University and Waco High and Waco ISD as a whole. Next up is something that we are excited about because it's a repeat thing. For the second year in a row, the Texas Art Education Association has named Waco ISD as a District of Distinction for the Visual Arts. After a rigorous application process which evaluated instruction in the visual arts, extracurricular opportunities and community service, just 42 districts were selected from over 1,000 eligible districts for the 2020-2021 list. In February of this year, students from 11 Waco ISD elementary schools competed in their Region 12 Texas Elementary Art Meet. Waco ISD submitted the highest number of entries at the regional level and earned a total of 60 gold medals. Also, six Waco ISD students earned the designation of "Top of the Team," the team equivalent to qualifying for state, given to works in the top 10% of entries submitted. Additionally, students from University High and Waco High competed in the Region 12 Visual Arts Scholastic Events, with four University High students and four Waco High students qualifying to advance to the state competition. Those aforementioned student groups are just one piece of how we were able to earn this distinction, and they have been recognized in previous months at previous board meetings. So this month, the visual arts teachers and district director for fine arts are the ones that we have chosen to highlight and recognize for their efforts that led to this distinction for Waco ISD. Our visual arts teachers are Jeff Blackman from JH Heinz, Jane Britt, Alta Vista, Mercedes Carranza, Kendrick, Catherine Chiles, South Waco, Joel Colosimo, Waco High, Renee Ebling, University High, Emily Enriquez, GW Carver, Zeke Fielding, Indian Spring, CJ Fraga, Providence Heights, Amy Garrison, Tennyson, Hope Garrity, Waco High, Jessica Greer, West Avenue, Bonnie Holmstrom, Cesar Chavez, Quentin Horn, Waco High, Mariah Jackson, Dean Highland, Willie Keener, Waco High, Sean Knuckles, Tennyson, Kirsten Neff, Cedar Ridge, Sally Peavy, Cesar Chavez, Brad Settles, University, Ann Sheehy, Crestview, Nikki Stokes, Lake Air, Sarah Weatherly, Hillcrest, Ashley Webb, Parkdale, and Marilissa Young from Bell's Hill. And of course, they're all under the direction of the Waco ISD Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Larry Carpenter. So congratulations to all of our visual arts teachers, staff and students for earning this distinction for a second year in a row. And then of course, each of our campuses are under the direction of some of our fantastic principals. Every year in October, the American Federation of School Administrators, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals join forces to celebrate our nation's principles for their tireless dedication to their students and the schools they serve. During National Principals Month, schools and communities are asked to celebrate their principals, hashtag #ThankAPrincipal, and show appreciation for their leadership and impact on the lives and success of their students. Waco ISD is proud to honor, thank and celebrate our 26 principals and campus leaders for the dedication to our students. We obviously honor them every year, but especially this year. Starting with our elementary principals, Ms. Tia Allen, Dean Highland, Samantha Crater, Crestview, Lindsay Helton, Alta Vista, Twana Lee, South Waco, Isabel Lozano, Kendrick, Jennifer Lundquist, Hillcrest, Rebecca Meckel, Bell's Hill, Lena Ortiz, Parkdale, Melissa Pritchard, Mountain View, Julie Saipaw, Brook Avenue, Helen Smith, Cedar Ridge, Stephanie Tankersley, Lake Air, Everett Taylor, JH Heinz, John Weeks, West Avenue, Courtney Whitaker, Providence Heights. And of course, our secondary principals, Mr. Joseph Alexander at Indian Spring, Candice Becka at Guaca, Dr. Carrier at Carver, Larel Curtis at Wiley, Dr. Edison at University, Daphne Latchison at Brazos, Alonso McAdoo at Cesar Chavez, Dr. McCall at Guam, Matt Rambo at Tennyson, Chris Rankin at Challenge, and Mr. James Stewart at Waco High. And we've got a slide showing kind of a little thumbnail of all of their smiling faces, and again, thank you to our amazing principals at the elementary and secondary level. Next up, as we start the school year, we're kind of rocking and rolling at this point, we know that we have a long history of strong community support in the form of volunteers and partnerships, with many showing support during the first weeks of school as teachers and students return to campus for a new year. In a traditional year, volunteers may serve breakfast or lunch to teachers during their days of in-service, collect and gift supplies for teachers and students, or line up to high-five and greet students as they enter the campus on the first day. Although the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year prevented much of the usual in-person, face-to-face support due to social distancing requirements and efforts to reduce close contact, volunteers and community groups found new and creative ways to continue their support of the students and staff across Waco ISD. The district and its campuses are grateful for the generous support of the partners, volunteers and the community at large who chose to invest in Waco ISD staff and students at the start of an unprecedented new school year. And so there, we've got a listing, and I'll just, instead of reading through them, I'll have him just advance the slides, so you can kind of see just a few of the partners that support us each and every year, but especially this year at the beginning of the school year. So thank you to each and every one of these community partners who stepped up and helped us have a fantastic start to this school year. Finishing up this evening with our Outstanding Community Partner Award, the theme for this year is Empower All, Value All. The theme reflects the district's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals and individuals. Waco ISD recognizes that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow and succeed is strengthened. However, the district also recognizes that no individual or organization can thrive and accomplish their goals or mission alone. Instead, we are at our best when families, employees and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams to empower and value all students and staff and support their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students, staff and their success. Each month, the district is recognizing a community partner making a difference with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In October, the district is recognizing Creative Waco. Since its inception, Creative Waco has partnered with Waco ISD in a variety of ways to support its fine arts staff and students and create new innovative ways to collaborate and bring art experiences to students. Beginning in the summer of 2018, Creative Waco started a new program, Art Prenticeship, which offers real-world, concept-to-completion, mentored work experience for Waco ISD high school students. Art Prenticeship connects young creatives from the district's summer internship program with successful professional artists to create murals and public art in the community. By collaborating with business owners, sponsors and community leaders, the program teaches participants the transferable skills to manage every stage of a creative project from idea to icon. The program will also be implemented this fall for both fine arts and CTE students working on public art and community impact projects. While the majority of jobs or projects this fall will be in painting, other projects can also include illustration, digital imaging, drawing, photography, graphic design and other various mediums. Additionally, Creative Waco has worked with district staff and students during the past summer's citywide mask campaign with artwork pop-ups across the city encouraging citizens to wear masks. The organization has also provided guest artists as resources for teachers, held clinics both in-person and virtually, and actively sought the voices and input of Waco ISD fine arts teachers and students in the conversations about the arts in the Waco community. This evening, Executive Director Fiona Bond and Program Manager Stephanie Wheat Johnson will be accepting the award virtually, and we have a picture of them with their award. So there's Ms. Fiona Bond on the left and Ms. Wheat Johnson on the right. So congratulations to Creative Waco for all of their support through the years, and we honor them tonight with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partner. And that concludes this evening's recognitions.
Hey, thank you. Before I turn it over to you, Dr. Kincanon, I meant to, at the beginning of our meeting, acknowledge a loss that we have recently experienced, and then when I saw the note about upcoming COVID update, I reminded, although I have it posted right in front of me, I forgot. So at this time, I want to acknowledge some very sad news that we received this week. Cassandra Hubert, I hope I pronounced her name correctly, was a substitute bus monitor. She passed away after being diagnosed with COVID-19. She was 46 years old. Cassandra worked for the company that operates our buses, and while she was assigned to a route in another district most recently, she had served our students. She had worked for us as a bus monitor, and so regardless of the district, she helped keep things running smoothly, just as other bus monitors do for us day in and day out. She was a welcoming presence for our special needs students as they started their day, and I hope that you will join me in keeping Cassandra and her family in your prayers. Really no words for her loss and just the continuing presence of the pandemic and how it affects so many people. So, at this time, I wanted to say that and acknowledge her and her family. And with that, Dr. Kincanon, I'll turn it over to you to give the COVID-19 update and also the preliminary PEAN snapshot data.
Thank you. And good evening to everyone. I wanted to share this evening a little bit around our preliminary PEAN snapshot data and give you a brief COVID update as I have been doing at all of our meetings. Yesterday, we had 14,609 students enrolled in Waco ISD. That compares to 14,898 at last year's PEAN snapshot, which you all know occurs every year, the last day of the month, our last Friday in October, and that's the time that we typically, that TEA takes a look at our district demographics. So we lost 289 students this year. Of course, we're still entering data for the school year and we still have another week to go. That's about 2% of our population. And I have talked to our demographer, Templeton Demographics, Bob Templeton, who tells me that these numbers are in line with the averages for our area of the state. And so while it's not good that we've lost students, there are some areas of the state that have experienced as high as a 6% to 7% decline in student enrollment. And we've been steadily enrolling students since the school year began. Templeton Demographics will give a formal presentation to the board in January, but I have been talking to them, and they also tell me that 60% to 70% of the student loss across the state is in the pre-K, kindergarten and first grades, and that data is holding true for Waco ISD as well. Our pre-K enrollment is down by about 250 students, which has improved over the last several weeks. Kindergarten and first grade are also down about 50 students per grade level. Our student ethnicity is steady for our district. We're at about 61% Hispanic, 28% Black and 8.5% White. At this time, our coding shows that we have approximately 74% of our students who are economically disadvantaged, and that's too low, as we are typically close to 90%. And last year, we were 90%. However, we are still entering data, and we do know that a couple of our campuses have not entered their data yet. And so we anticipate that we will be 88% to 90% by the time we present our data. A couple of other things I wanted to highlight about our data that we're collecting for the state, special education numbers are approximately 10%. That's up from 8.1% on the 2018-2019 TAPER report and 9.3% last year. Dyslexia numbers are also increasing slightly. We're currently at about 5.5% compared to 4.67% last year. Bilingual and ESL percentages are down from last year. Bilingual is less than a percentage point down, and ESL is about four percentage points down. However, we're still testing students, and starting after Labor Day slowed us down a bit on that testing. The good news is that TEA is allowing districts until early December to clean up the data for this school year, and so we'll continue to focus on that over the next several weeks to make sure that we're accurate in our reporting for the state. Any questions about PEAN's snapshot data? Okay, we have had a smooth transition back to in-person instruction at the high school levels this week, and overall, fewer cases of COVID have been reported this week. It's too early to know if that represents the start of a new trend. It's too early to know if that represents the start of a new trend, but we are cautiously optimistic. As I reported last week, we had approximately 2,000 more students to join us for the new grading period that we're currently in, and obviously, we have more students on each campus and less space between students in our classrooms. So our ability to spread students out is more limited than it had been in the past, and it is truly based on the number of students who are coming to school. We have portable dividers available for our classrooms where there is less space for students. We originally ordered 4,000 dividers, and we have seen an increase in the request for those dividers from our campuses, so we placed another order for another 2,800 of those. And then in addition, our facilities team has also built some, fabricated some dividers for selected areas. We're monitoring our supplies of hand sanitizer, wipes, reusable and disposable masks and gloves, and at this time, we have plenty and have encouraged our principals to replenish supplies as needed for their classrooms. And some good news, Waco ISD has been awarded 2,234 T-Mobile Hot Spots as a part of the Project 10 Million Promotion. You may have seen those commercials during some football games recently, and we're lucky recipient of those. This is a great program, including the free hotspots. We also get 100 gig of free data for each hotspot, each, for five years on each of those devices, and we're also able to purchase student technology devices through T-Mobile at a lower cost. I'd like to thank Jerry Allen for his work to very quickly submit our grant, and he was able to use our remote instruction plan and pull pieces from that that Mrs. Cornblum had worked on and submit that very quickly and secure those devices for our students. And that's what I have this evening. Can I answer any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we need to, I guess briefly adjourn the public meeting. Or, yeah, right? And we have a public meeting for Ms. Davis. Are you there? I assume that she's there and coming to the podium. At this time, she'll give the public meeting on the 2020 Annual Financial Management Report School First.
Annually, we are required to present on our financial accountability. This is, was authorized by the legislature in 1999, and it is the finance side of the House. Our accountability, just like the student's side of the House, has accountability on test scores and other areas. It was mainly instituted at a time when there were some financial difficulties throughout the state, and so the primary goal of the accountability system was to achieve improved performance. And then it had a number of objectives that went along with that, including the quality of financial management and to measure and report certain aspects of finances throughout the state and then evaluate the quality of our decisions. So the district is required, as part of the report, to have, to prepare an annual management report. We have an actual book that we put together. It is posted on our financial transparency website, and it will include a more detailed explanation of what I'm going to go over here in the presentation tonight. So if any of you want some, need to help yourself go to sleep at night, you can read the school management report. And part of that requirement is also that we have the public hearing. We have to publish the notice. That was done. It has to be done within two weeks of the meeting and no longer than 30 days, and then we take public input at that meeting. So there are a number of rating system indicators. There are three, five critical indicators. If you fail any one of those indicators, you fail School First. There are seven solvency indicators that show whether the district is solvent and a going concern, and then three financial competency indicators. The measurement indicators, the critical indicators are just a yes/no, and the other indicators, you can score 0 to 10 points based on the performance. For the 2020 School First rating that we're presenting tonight is based on financial data from 2018-19. So the state runs about two years behind in getting us, getting the report out because we have to submit our financial data at the end of the audit in January, and then from there, they create their report. The critical indicators are something that, as I've said before, you should, every district should pass these. Was your annual financial report done and submitted timely? Ours is due January 28th. Was there an unmodified opinion? Unmodified is good for an audit. Was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all our debt agreements? We didn't default on any debt. Did the school district make timely payments to, on all of our payroll taxes primarily? And then was the total unrestricted net asset balance in the governmental activities greater than zero? Now, this category, there is, they are not really scoring because in the last few years, all of us, all the school districts have had to record our pension liability and our post-employment liabilities for TRS care. It put most districts into a negative situation, so they have given us some credit for that criteria. The second area is the solvency indicators, and so they're looking at, do you have cash on hand to cover your operations? Are your current assets to current liabilities ratio sufficient to cover that short-term debt? And then our long, then they look at our long-term liabilities to make sure it can support our long-term debt. They look at the general fund revenues to make sure that they equal or exceed expenditures over a three-year period, or, and if they don't, do we have cash on hand to take us through the next 60 days? Was the debt service ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? School district administrative cost ratio, they do look at that. This is one of the areas that we do lose some points on each year. We'll look at that in a minute. And the school district not have a 15% decline in the students-to-staff ratio. And then the financial competence indicators, they look at the comparison as we, we report to PMS, just like student data reports to PMS, and they make sure that our variance is less than 3% of the expenditures by function, and we are always very, very accurate on our reporting there. And did the external independent auditor find any instances of material noncompliance with grants and contracts? Or did they, were we in such financial difficulties that we had to adjust our payment schedule from TEA, which we've never had to do? So also included in the written report that you'll find on the website, we have certain disclosures that we have to make. The superintendent's current contract is published there. There's a schedule of expenditures, reimbursements for the superintendent and board of lodging, meals, travel, and other reimbursements. There's a schedule of any outside compensation paid to the superintendent, and if you'll remember, this is for 1819, so this information here would be with a prior superintendent. And then schedule of gifts with an aggregate value in excess of $250 to the superintendent or board. Each of our board members and superintendent file a conflict of interest schedule with the, form with the district as required by the Secretary of State to disclose any gifts that they might receive, and then a schedule of business transactions between board members and the district. The rating, there is four ratings that you can get: Superior Achievement, Above Standard, Meet Standard, and Substandard Achievement. You can also not get a rating at all. If your data is so bad that the state can't measure you under that criteria, then they will give you no rating. And if you have substandard or no rating, there can be TEA sanctions against you. They can assign a financial monitor or master, and you can have an accreditation investigation. So for the 2020 report, we received an A, Superior Achievement. We scored the same score we got last year, 96 out of 100 points. I think we've gotten that the last two years. We have a couple of areas that we do have, that we scored two less points on the same two criteria this year that we did last year, although we did improve slightly on one. The first, we did get the 10, eight points on indicator eight, and that's our ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets. We did improve a little bit there. Last year, our ratio was .6229. This year, it was .65. As you can see, the range is from .6 to .7, so we did improve, or actually, we went down a little bit on this one. We improved on the other one. So we're at .65 for the 2017-18. Oh, I'm sorry. We did improve. I got a reverse order. 17-18, we were .65, and for 18-19, we were .62. So we are improving in that category. That means our assets and mostly our liabilities are going down. As we're paying off debt in the district, our liabilities are going down, and so that has improved that ratio. The second one is on the administrative cost ratio. Districts the size of Waco are in a category with all districts that are 10,000 and above. So those very large districts, it's very easy for them to make this administrative cost ratio and get the 10 points for a district the size of Waco. It's a little bit more difficult for us to, we're big enough to have administrative costs, have to have some more specialized positions, so most districts in this category do have, our size have a difficulty making the full 10 points. So our district's administrative cost ratio was computed at 8.78 for the fiscal year ended August 2019, which is a slight increase over the 8.62 for the prior year. So that's the one that did go down just slightly. So that's the report. As I said, the full report is on our website, on our transparency page, and that is the web address. If anybody in the public or board members would like a hard copy of it, it is available through either my office or our Public Information Office. So there's.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Just a comment. Well done.
Next is the, yes. I, we will be pulling item G from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that a member of the board would like to pull for further Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 6G.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of the item 6G.
Thank you. Ms. CordeWeg, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Item 6G concerns a resolution to grant authority to the district's investment officers to conduct investment and banking transactions with the First National Bank, and I believe the item has been pulled just to allow for a separate vote.
Yeah. Madam President, yeah, I asked for it to be pulled for the purpose of abstaining on this vote. Thank you.
Okay. Any need for any discussion on it? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the item as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. A second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. And I will acknowledge at this time, Mr. Sykes abstention. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Six with, six for zero against one. Thank you. Okay. All right. Is Mr. Myers in the, is in the house? Mr. Myers? Mr. Boswick? Hi. How are you? Good to see you. It's all yours, our 2020 delinquent tax collection report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you. I got it. And thank you, President Teakell, Dr. Kincanon, members of the board. I'm Robert Myers. I'm an attorney with the McCurry-Vaselka-Bragg &amp; Allen Law Firm, and I'm here with Mr. Rick Boswick. We're going to give you just a brief overview of your property tax collections for the last year, which is, I think, a relatively good year considering the circumstances that we're all living with. I would like to point out that I suspect the agenda was structured so that Rick and I would present our information after I thought, but was, Davis did a great job on presenting a rather tedious financial report, and she wanted to give a dynamic, sitting on the edge of your chair report, or Rick and I to sort of get the spirit going and the blood circulating once again, and all the members of the boards, as well as the public who are here and watching this. So we'll, we'll go through our report and try to keep you, too much suspense from happening. And I think I've got this, this operating correctly. We have a quick PowerPoint presentation of some of the slides that we have. Our report is designed to give you just an overview of your property tax collections and some of the work that we do to try to assist the district in getting its taxes collected. First slide we have here, these bar chart, this is bar chart, which represents the districts what we call your current tax collection. This is the amount of taxes that is levied each year for the past five years, the latest year being 2019, and the taxes that were collected during that period of time. And the latest year, 2019, starts with the tax season in October of 19 and runs through the end of the district's fiscal year, August 31st. And what surprised, I think, all of us that work in our business is that in 2019, your tax collections actually were fairly strong. We all know the circumstances that we're all living with, and despite the fact that it's, it's been very difficult for most of us, your taxes, tax collections were really pretty strong considering. Now, most of these taxes get paid by the end of January, which is before most of this sort of broke open, but even after that period of time, you really finished in a very strong way. You collect a 98.23% of the levy. That's just tax, tax for 2019. That's a fairly strong figure. In discussing this with, with Ms. Davis beforehand, she wanted to point out that in her reporting to you of property tax collections, she mentioned that in comparison to what was estimated in your budget, there was less collected than what was estimated, and that's because, not to get too, not to get too technical involved, when you start your year out in October 1, typically, any taxing authority loses some of its levy throughout the year through adjustments made by the appraisal district and so forth. The contrary has been occurring for Waco ISD for the past few years. For example, in 2017, at the end of the year, you actually had $4 million more in taxes than you started the year out. In 2018, you had $3.5 million. So for this year, for 2019, in her, in her forecast, Ms. Davis had estimated you would have some similar numbers in there, and because of some circumstances going on at the appraisal district, you actually ended up with half that amount of money, and so her projections were a little off based upon what has happened previously. But overall, year to year, actually tax levied, that tax collected, you actually had a fairly good year. 98.23 is a pretty good number considering the circumstances. and falls in line with what you've done in prior years when you've had some things. The next chart is the same five years, same type of reporting, except in this instance, we've added in the delinquent taxes and penalties and interest you've collected in each of those past five years. And as typically as you can see, the district usually collects over 100% of its levy each year. And in 2019, that was the case. In 2019, you levied $83,424, and you collected $83,888, over 100% when you add in the penalties, interest, and prior year's taxes you collected, which I think is a healthy sign for the district to know that, that despite all the circumstances here, your taxpayers were able to pay their taxes. And I think that's what drives taxes, tax collections, is the ability of people to pay. And even over these tough circumstances where I have on, we're still holding, your taxpayers and property owners are still holding strong and being able to do that. And next chart basically just shows what's, what's left over. This chart shows the taxes that were collected to date for each of the five years, penalties and interest, just what's left of each year's levy. And ultimately, the district collects well over 99% of the taxes it levies. Very small percentage of the taxes that you levy go uncollected. So working with your taxpayers through payment agreements and working with them to get their taxes paid, ultimately, the district recovers most of the taxes. So the school board, the school district, has enough money to fund the functions for our kids to make sure they get educated. And let me turn it over to Mr. Boswick.
With the pie chart that we're looking at, you've seen this before in prior presentations, and this isn't significantly different than the ones we've shown you before. It basically shows that we typically get the delinquent taxes on July 1, and three months later, we've collected over 42% of those, which is indicative of the fact that it really just requires a little bit more urging to get people to pay those delinquent taxes. And I'm going to speak to that in a minute, because I'm very serious when I say a little bit of urging, because it really is. The second pie chart basically shows the status of the collections one year later at 15 months. And by that time, over 76% of the delinquent taxes have been collected. And then, finally, the last pie chart. I must be growing. Basically shows the status after 27 months. And after 27 months, 83% of the delinquent taxes that you've turned over to us are collected. And then, as you can see, what's left basically is, are the harder taxes or the taxes you may not ever collect. That's, and that has to be done by suits or judgments, payouts, insolvencies, and further research in certain instances. But very briefly, let me tell you what the typical process is, because I've talked to y'all in the past about, we realize one of our duties is to collect the maximum amount of delinquent taxes that we reasonably can for the district. But we also realize there's a balance to that, because those taxes are being collected from your neighbors, my neighbors, your constituents, and the parents and grandparents and great-grandparents of students in this district. And so we have to collect those on your behalf, acting as your agent in a way that is compassionate and that you can feel comfortable with. And really, what, before we do anything, I mentioned that it starts with just a little bit of urging. There are actually three notice letters sent out before any further action is taken. And that's because when I said that a lot of those taxes can be collected with just a little bit of urging, that's absolutely true. And that's what happens. They come into the office, we enter into some kind of agreement, usually an extended, an extension to pay those taxes. And then, in most instances, that's exactly what happens. And it's only after that, after three notices, that we look at, you know, lawsuits, or in some cases, these people are in bankruptcy, not, not just people, but entities. Or they're insolvent or abandoned real estate, or that sort of thing. We think that that is critical, acting as your agents to do that in a way that is reasonable, thoughtful, and compassionate, and that y'all can feel comfortable with. And, and we are dedicated to that type of process. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we will bid you adieu. Thank you.
Madam President, let me just make a comment at the conclusion of this. As, as always, we appreciate the work your firms do on behalf of the district. The results continue to be beneficial for the community, the school district, and our taxpayers. And the Balancing Act that you referred to is, is very, very present. We're aware of that, and you all manage that in a tremendous way. So we appreciate everything you all have done, and, and results are very good, and we appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Is Mr. Sturzinger in the house? Yes, okay. Review and discuss facilities planning, educational visioning. Mr. Sturzinger.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Good evening, Dr. Kincanon. Thank you for having us here today. Tonight, I had the opportunity to present to you the, what I'll say is the final leg in the district snapshot for Waco ISD, which is around the educational visioning process. So as we look at the educational visioning, we're really talking about us understanding the vision for teaching and learning within Waco ISD. We wanted to really understand what is it currently? And how, and then, as well as, what does it want to be looking off into the future? This really comes down to the intersection of us understanding the pedagogy, looking throughout the district, and ultimately getting into facility impacts and what that means for those facilities. We have the opportunity to sit with many of the Waco ISD staff, and you'll see there at the top of the slide, there's 10 lenses, I'll call it, that we really looked at the district to be able to comprehensively understand education there. From this, we're really looking to get ideas and concepts moving forward. Some things as simple as, you know, what is a marker board? Or a projection screen, does that turn into an interactive projector? And ultimately, how do we want to influence that looking into the future? Or something a little bit more complex about creating flexibility in the classroom, about the level of transparency, creating collaborative space? Are there outdoor classrooms? And ultimately, how do we support that now? How do we support that moving forward within the future? So what you'll see here on the subsequent, subsequent slides are communication of some of the facility impacts that we see within there. And you'll see them organized by each one of those trades, or each one of those curriculum areas. And so I'll focus in on each one of those. I start with the slide on educational vision with the idea of addressing everything holistically within the district. And one of the things that we found, not only as we walked through the facility, but as we talked through some of the staff, is that generally, the schools have been run relatively autonomously or independently to each other. And so didn't necessarily align with a district curriculum. And I know that there's a lot of effort being put on here to bring those back into alignment to, to ensure that whatever's taught at one elementary school and how it's taught is aligned with how it's taught at all elementary schools. That way, at all secondary schools as well. We additionally saw that there needed to be some alignment of the function, meaning in essence, are you teaching band in the right room? Are you teaching athletics or art within the right, right room? Meaning that you're aligning the function and the space it serves. And ultimately, we could see a process where we would go through and what I would call create an education specification that basically is the yardstick to begin to measure and make sure that at each facility, that you're teaching the same thing in the same way. So that was a common theme that we found throughout. You'll see that kind of weaved into each one of these areas as you go through and you see it. But it's something that we would look to start addressing here in the future as well. So moving into elementary school education, this is where you'll see some similarities between elementary, middle school, and secondary. Again, that idea of the space and the function and aligning those. You'll additionally see elements of professional development needed throughout, so that you can get horizontal alignment amongst the grade level, but then also vertical alignment between, between the subject matters, so that our teachers have a space to not only, to provide that best education for the students. As we look specifically at the educational, at the elementary educational environment, a lot of the discussion created around the future was about taking advantage of opportunities like you see at Bell's Hills or Hind School, where you have the collaborative areas, you have the things that you need with the instructional environment, and pulling that into some of the older facilities as well and bringing them up to that same level of standard and care. As we move to the middle school facilities, here again, you see the, the common themes about space and function, professional development. But this is where you begin at the secondary level, really talking about the supporting elements within the facility. So the integration of fine arts, integration of athletics, and making sure those facilities are supported. You'll see here later in the presentation, we'll dive a little bit deeper into those subjects. But again, you'll see, for example, the picture in the middle of the, the facility, you still have a chalkboard in that classroom, you have a pushman, and there was actually a TV at the time we went in here that was there, but not functioning at the time. As we look at the high school level, again, here, this is where we want to start looking at equity between Waco High School, University High School. And again, when you see that right blend of function and space, the bottom center picture is actually an old lecture hall room that is now being used as a technology room. So when you go in that room, they actually have rows of computers that face the back of the classroom, and the teacher sits at the front of the classroom. So it's not the most appropriate space to be able to deliver education there. So as we move out of the core curriculum areas and we start moving into the specialty curriculum areas, we look at science. Here, and as we look at providing the right appropriate number of size and number of science classrooms, at the high school level, that means making sure that labs are outfitted for the flexibility, not only current and future, for courses like physics, biology, chemistry. But then it also starts getting into a discussion about how, creating flexibility for the teachers. Because many teachers will teach different subject matter areas. So you may have a teacher teaching biology, biochem, maybe get into some of the CTE programs, or they may be touching, teaching multiple levels of the same subject. All that getting to how the balance between lab and lecture becomes very important to create that flexibility so you can have multiple labs set up to facilitate multiple students. At the middle school level, we really saw draw to need to create a common science room standard and implement that across the board at all schools. They were at various levels within those educational environments. And then at the elementary school level, integrating science throughout in a similar way. Some of the newer schools actually had dedicated science rooms. Other schools use more of the collaborative area or taught it within the educational environment. And as we continue this discussion, this type of element really becomes that opportunity that maybe we can, if science is taught within the classroom at the elementary school level, well then, let's repurpose that lab to a new function. Or it may mean the opposite, that we need to build science rooms at every elementary school. Really need to continue to develop in, in that conversation. As we look at the kind of Sisters to Science, Career and Technical Education, this is really an opportunity for, for our students to try on careers, gain knowledge in subject areas, maybe even certifications, really lead into that post-secondary education, whether it's a step into a career or a step into college. This is really an opportunity to try those things on. There's a wealth of opportunity currently in Waco ISD. So they're doing a great job, aligned program there. And so the discussion here, we're really focused in around maximizing guaca and guama and how those integrate into the two other high schools, how we support additional facilities. There's a little bit of discussion about where the actual CTE courses are located in the schools. How do we make sure that students are aware of those coming on? How are we making sure that the teachers also are able to collaborate, being disparate, located disparately throughout the building? At the middle school level, legislation within the state just recently changed. So now we're seeing CTE programs actually being pulled down to that level. So there'll need to be a discussion about what that means for impact to the facilities. Do we need additional rooms? How do we create that flexibility within the efficiency of the middle school facilities? As we transition over to visual and performing arts, it was exciting to hear, the district was a district of distinction here tonight, so you know the, the great things that are happening here. So a lot of this will be providing the right facilities to continue that moving forward. At the high school, that really means about providing adequate size and support in the number of facilities. There's an increased level of participation, for example, in band. You have more instruments, more students, you need more space. But it also means then the support facilities like practice rooms, ensemble rooms, percussion rooms that go along with that. At the middle school level, very similar story of expanding in the band, orchestra, and choir realm, so that those programs begin to feed into the high school program. And then, as well as growing those offerings, is diversifying just outside of band and choir. At the elementary school level, again, very similar to science, art is handled in various different ways across the campuses. Some have a dedicated art classroom, others are teaching within the classroom. So there's that look that we need to have to make sure that there's equity, that educational specification to define that. And then that's carried all the way up to the high school level as well. More students are being required because of the certifications that are going through the high school level. So we're seeing more art Level 1 throughout, more students, more teachers. Sometimes we're seeing high schools with four and five arts views now to be able to meet the need of students to have to move through the program. As we look at supporting our students with special needs here, the district is currently grouping a lot of those students across the district to be able to best facilitate those individuals with high, high needs. With that, we need to be able to provide those facilities to support those individuals, make it into OTPT rooms, life skills rooms, those type of elements. As well, you'll see some language in here about centralizing the district staff. It's currently, they're located at a few different facilities, but those support staff, the itinerant staff that move around, be able to centrally locate those so they can collaborate. And then on the campus, it's providing space that, not necessarily dedicated, but has the, the opportunity to be used for arts and for the facilitators onsite. So they have a home at every campus. Sometimes they're having to literally use the hallways. Sometimes they're able to borrow a conference room with the administration suite. But with those increasing in frequency over the years, more and more space is needed to be able to provide for them. As we turn to athletics, here, very similar to the visual and performing arts, is there's an increased level of sports and participation in them. We really need to be able to provide spaces for our athletes to train, our athletes to practice, and ultimately to play. So there, you know, for example, the Paul Tyson Project's a great opportunity to provide that highest level facility to train and practice on. Then in turn, need to be able to support those athletes. So there's been discussion at Carver, for example, of how we're supporting the number of athletes in the athletics program, how that's beginning to diversify and move forward. Again, they're competing on a state and national level. And need to compete, the facilities need to be able to support that. As we look inside the classroom, or really inside the facility, and we look at technology and instructional technology and the ubiquity of it, the, the goal would be is to create a unified standard for what I'll call projection. What is the teaching instructional law? Is it a projector on a cart? Is it a mounted projector? Is it interactive? We're starting to see displays. There's lots of different options here. And they really vary throughout the district based on the preference of the campus at the time they were installed. Additionally, we see an increase in the, in the amount of Wi-Fi needed throughout the campus as students are bringing more devices, you're moving towards a one-to-one. That's needed not only internal to the facility, but external to the facility as COVID has identified that students are coming to the campuses, maybe not getting in them. Now they are thankfully, but increase those opportunities there, which this then does provide the opportunity of a shift away from computer labs. Is that we get more devices that are flexible, that testing is able to be conducted on them, we have that opportunity to kind of buy back some of the space for instructional technology. And finally, as we finish with libraries and we look at these at the heart of the school, they continue to be a vibrant part of every campus. However, we do see a transition towards digital However, we do see a transition towards digital media. A lot of that is in reference media in the nonfiction section, and therefore, we still see a lot of need and drive for students for still books in hands. So there's additionally a goal about refreshing the printed volumes, and so with that space, we have the opportunity of creating spaces for collaboration, more students coming in and out of the library, working together with the librarian. The librarian's role is often changing and increasing the offerings, and so then we see spaces like Makerspace, whether they're digital, they're analog, being, starting to integrate and expand there in the library. So that's the last of the function, of the educational, visional areas that we talked about, and just a glimpse of the conversations that we had and some of those facility needs. And overall, I would, I would simply summarize the findings as the need to support current needs for our students, but then also future flexibility. And that's really about providing the space, right space, right place, providing the tools at hand for our students and our teachers, so as simple as a chalkboard or whiteboard, furniture, and then ultimately creating that flexibility for the future moving forward. You'll see here at the bottom, there are the considerations as well of what to think about as you move through this information, which is in essence, pulling it all together. And that's what I'll summarize here with today, that last leg. We started with the facility assessment a few months back, which has identified $55 million of current needs to improve the facilities with some building effort in about 10 years, so in about 2030. We talked about the capacity study within the district, about meeting the current needs of capacity within the existing facilities, but a need to understand pre-K, and that, as that continues to evolve within the state, we have more students enrolled, need to look at that. Last, we had presented about the educational suitability, about the correlation between the building and the age and the ability to meet those needs, with some overall facility needs to be able to hit college and career readiness, project-based learning, FFNE, security, those type of elements. And tonight, we ended with the educational vision about where we're at and how we can continue to support that moving forward. So next steps from here is there is a wealth of information here, and so what we would plan to do is next month, be bring, bring to you a plan of how a long-range plan could be created to start looking at, how do you start addressing these items? What are those goals and priorities? And ultimately, create a vision for Waco ISD to take you to the next 10 or 15 years down the road. So with that, I'll pause, lots of information, and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Jared, as, with the comments you made going forward, and there's a lot of pieces to this, obviously, but can you address where there's an intersection between the educational visioning that we'll be developing in this process and how it overlaps perhaps into research on learning environments?
So question, educational vision in learning environment. So we'd really take the educational vision that's developed by the district and the curriculum leaders. We had great conversations with many of them, and they're starting to create exactly where that is that they want to head, whether it's, I'll say, CTE, want programs we want to offer, or if it's in the core curriculum and how we want to create flexibility within, in that learning environment. So then, as we look at the architecture that supports that, we will start identifying things that we feel that align and start a conversation with that in terms of strategy, and then as well as be able to take individuals on tours, usually is what we do, to go see those buildings and places in action. And so there's not only just a few, usually it's the core curriculum leaders within the district so they can get that look and feel along the way. I would say you see a lot of those elements being implemented. When I mentioned Bell's Hills, University has some good things happening there about that flexibility in the environment, so you're seeing those already integrated into the facilities. And so then it would be continuing to pull that, that data and the research that we bring to the table for the updating the last 10 years as well.
Perhaps let me clarify one step. Is it, is there research-based information that you rely upon to assist with moving through the visioning process?
So I think, yes, there is research that we, everything that we do in terms of architecture is based in research. We call it often here called evidence-based design. And so that's as, as simple as providing natural light within the classroom that affects testing scores, accountability, attendance, those type of elements. And then in terms of strategies, we're very careful about the educational planning strategies, the implementation, I'll say, operable partition, flexibility within the classrooms, that there's a discussion about how far we want to go, and then there's research that then shows the implications thereof of those elements, yes.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
My question is, with the COVID-19, and we are looking to the future, and if I'm correct, I think we have lost a few students and everything like that. Are all these plans, are there anything, are any of these plans take in calculation what COVID might, COVID-19 may do us in the next year or so? Hello, anybody hear me?
So I can, I can speak to it a little bit on the facility side, if you would like?
Yes.
So from the facility side, I would say that we, our practice actually has a leg in the healthcare side, so we can bring a lot of that opportunity to discussion, and we've started, we've always done research, but can offer that research as well to the district from what kind of flooring material are you using? Are you getting into a seamless floor or an anti-microbial floor? That ventures all the way into the fabrics that you put on furniture. And then there's a lot of discussion about the mechanical systems, about the rate of outside air that you put in. They're starting to introduce technologies. Needlepoint bipolar ionization is the technical term that basically allows, it helps provide cleaner air within the facility. Has shown impacts on bacteria and viruses that we can continue to discuss. And so part of that will all wrap up when we talk about what I often phrase as the quality of the facility, about what elements that you want to get integrated into a design. In essence, it's, you know, what kind of tires do you put on your car? Are they low-quality, medium-quality, or high-quality tires? You have all those options when you build a building as well.
But do we know, but do we know right now, some of these systems that you're speaking of, some of them, I think some of them are already up, and of course, I'm quite sure there's other ones that are in the workings and everything, but we, do we really know how much that will increase the cost of, of, of these possible units or systems that we're going to add to the schools? And, 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 and if, can you, can you honestly say that we got enough money or we don't have a, with the state and federal government and our ADA, that we don't be able to accomplish this in the future?
So I'll address it from the facility side of, yes, we can determine what that will, how that will address the construction cost of the facility, and there will be discussion about the operational cost as well moving forward. So yes, we can determine price, and then to your second question, and I think Dr. Cannon may jump in, is as we go through the planning process, we will discuss how that impacts price, what you could afford within your annual budget, as well as what you may look at for a bond budget as well.
So next month, Jared will outline the process for long-range planning. It will be a fairly lengthy process, and we will talk about with the Citizens Committee, the vision, and we'll develop that plan together. So those costs will be based on the plan and the vision of what the community wants for the school district. And so I think you raised a really good question about what COVID does to the vision for the future, and there's a lot of conversation around the future and what changes might be made as a result of COVID. And so we don't yet know the impact of that long-term, but I think certainly it will impact all of our school systems. And so we'll have those conversations together, and it will, you know, we hope to begin in after Christmas with this conversation, and it will be, you know, eight, 10 meetings or close to a year's worth of a conversation about this topic. And Jared will guide us through that as we go. And we'll, we'll outline that for you in November so that you can see what that looks like, and so the board will be involved all along the way in making decisions, and of course, costs will be a huge consideration in that.
And my other concern is that because we have so many schools, older schools, with almost some outdated systems, and I know we have talked with the idea of, you know, updating schools and even talked with the idea of building new schools. I just wonder, I'm just, I'm very concerned of what this impact of this COVID-19 is going to have on that discussion and our future for Waco and the school district. That's all my concern with it. Thank you.
Yeah, those are legitimate concerns, and we will, you know, we'll take our time, and I think, you know, what you said is, we have a lot of things to address, and we won't be able to address them all at once. So we'll have to spread those costs out over time, and we'll have to prioritize what's most, what we want to do first, and then what we want to do next. So when Jared talks about a 10- to 15-year plan, you know, we won't be doing all of this work in just a couple of years. We'll have, we'll, you know, likely do it in phases.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Great.
Thank you. Jared, good work. See you next month.
Yes, ma'am.
Look forward to it, thank you. Let's see. Dr. Warren is next. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the board's resolution on race equity. We talked about this last week in our workshop.
Yes, ma'am, and good evening. I am pleased to be back to present to you this resolution as it was written, and am opening the floor for any questions or comments that you might have now that you've had an opportunity to review it.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
Great. Dr. Warren, thank you so much for your work on this resolution. It is thoughtful, insightful, it really does touch on so much that I think is kind of a motivation of ours here on the board and within the district. You know, I had one question on this, I think it's the second line when it talks about, whereas a national crisis of racism has been reflected in recent historical events that underscore injustice and discrimination that is pervasive throughout the national culture, particularly as it relates to the black community. I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, but was wondering if we could also include communities of color? When I think of family separations, when I think of kind of the wide, very apparent racism that is happening in our community, I think, I do agree that the black community, the egregiousness of some of the actions have, are unacceptable. I also think that there have been some difficult situations for other communities of color in our community. I can think of a specific example of a group of pastors meeting here in town, speaking Spanish, and someone came up to them and told them to go back to their country when they're American citizens. So I just think that, you know, these past couple of years have showed us exactly where we need to work on, and I don't know, what are your thoughts on that or your?
Well, first of all, I want to make sure that Kimberly Haynes is attributed for her work to draft this resolution. From her initial work, though, this really is intended to be a board resolution, and so the edits, the word tweaking, the phrasing is really in front of y'all. And so, Madam President, rather than my ideas or my suggestions for edits, it really is a reflection of how you view this work. And so, Ms. Cordowick, if you don't mind my tossing the ball to President Tico, I'll ask that you facilitate that part of the conversation.
Okay, well, and I, and I was trying to pull up the resolution, I've got, and I can't, but, because I've got pages in front of me, but is there a word that you, what I would suggest is if you'd like to make an amendment to the resolution, you're welcome to do that, and I don't know if it's changing one word or if it's changing in several spots, or maybe if this is something we just want to keep talking about and maybe go back and talk about whether or not we want to make it broader or not, and I'm up for, I'm up for what y'all want to do. Thank you.
Mrs. Cordowick, did you have a recommendation on wording there that you wanted to make?
As I was looking at this, I thought that we could potentially talk about injustice, discrimination that's pervasive throughout the national culture particularly. There's actually two ways that we could potentially do this, as it relates to the black community and communities of color, or we could just say, that's pervasive throughout the national culture particularly as it relates to communities of color. I don't want to detract from the pain, specifically that the black community here and across our nation has endured for a very long time. So that, I don't want to detract from that, but I also know that there are communities of color that are also dealing with pain, but for fear of deportation, they don't speak up, or for fear of never being able to see their family again, or going to a country that they didn't grow up in. So I just think that it, it looks different in different communities, and so that was, I don't want to detract from the black community because I think pain is real, but I also want to acknowledge the pain that other communities of color have also had to endure.
Hearing that explanation, I will offer a newer term, if you will, to the vocabulary of all issues around equity, racial equity right now, and that's BIPOC, B-I-P-O-C, which is Black, Indigenous, and People of Color. So using that acronym in the spot that Ms. Cordowick identified could cover all that she's saying.
And so my question to you, Dr. Warren, because I know that this is the result of a committee's work over several months, I just want to make sure that, that if we, so from what I can tell by looking at the resolution, it would be one change, it would be changing in, let's see, switching out the phrase "black community" for, and I don't think the acronym would be appropriate.
It would need to be spelled out.
It would need to be spelled out, but it would just be that one change? Okay. So my question to you, Dr. Warren, is whether, is that something that you think the committee would be, would still support, be behind, or is that something that we need to have further conversation about?
I absolutely believe that both Ms. Jones and Ms. Haynes, who have really been our, our first followers, if you will, our, our leaders in this effort so far, would support that phrasing.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Manning.
Okay, I support the direction that Mrs. Cordowick is going in, and because of the fact that this affects- fact that this affects more than just the Black community. And when you look at the demographics for Waco Independent School District, our highest demographic is we have Hispanic students, and then Black students, and everyone else falling in line. So I support that that, that needs to be changed because it's not just a focus on the Black community.
Thank you. See anybody else have a comment or? So right now, the, on the floor is, is changing the one phrase in the resolution from Black community to spell out the B-I-P-O-C. And I'm...
Can she repeat that again?
What is it? Black, Indigenous, people of color? Is that it? Okay. And is there a, is there punctuation, or it's just all, I've seen the acronym, but I haven't seen it spelled out?
No punctuation.
Okay. So if we make that one change, seems like everybody's okay with that. And with, with that change, I'll entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I would motion that we adopt it with the suggestions that were suggested by Ms. Cordowick and Dr. Warren in full, just with that change that we talked about in that paragraph.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Any further discussion?
Dr. Warren, I just would like again to say thank you for putting in a resolution, you and several other individuals, in a resolution what is so important to our district and is needed. And so really just wanted to come into you and the, and the team for putting this together because while we feel like we can be doing it, I think it needs to be explicitly stated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It sounds like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Dr. Warren, for your work in the committee. And I, if you'll make that change and forward back out to us, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Last on our agenda tonight is the district improvement plan that we reviewed with Dr. Kim Cannon last week. I didn't receive any questions or comments about it this past week. I don't know if, if you did, Dr. Kim Cannon, but is, does anybody have any, any questions or comments or changes that they would like to make to the plan that was presented last week? Well, your pla, your district improvement plan is always very ambitious and, or so in, in the present times. But thank you for, for keeping the work going in spite of everything.
You're very welcome. We, we will bring you campus improvement plans next month.
President, I move that we approve the district improvement plan for 2021 as presented.
Thank you. Sykes, second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Pedanya. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Kim Cannon. Okay, announcements. Mr. Wucher is not there tonight. Oh, Mr. DeBeere, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. One announcement that we wanted to share this evening. Since early in the days of this pandemic, the Central Texas Food Bank has played an important role in helping families in our community who are facing food insecurity respond to that challenge. And they've held several distribution events at the Waco ISD stadium. Our, their next event will be held on November 5th and will take place in the stadium parking lot from 10:00 a.m. until noon. And that's an opportunity for families to pick up food from the food bank.
Is that it? Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for tolerating the hybrid. It's hard, it's hard being remote, Mr. Manning. Ms. Cordowick was Houston. It's hard. You can't see the rest of the room. But anyway, thanks all for bearing with us tonight and hope everybody has a nice evening. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.